Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education Business Meeting. Today is Monday, February 12, 2018. I'd like to call this meeting to order and I will turn over the meeting to Vice Chair, Mrs. Carpenter, as my voice certainly will not last all evening. Thank you.
Yes. If we could have a moment of silence for Karen Hilton. She was a CCS bus driver who passed away on February 4, 2018. If we could have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Now, we have our ceremony presenting - presentation of colors by Central Cabarrus High School AFR ROTC cadets.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? Gave proof through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Port, arms. Right, face.
And our National Anthem was sung by JN Free's Middle School Choir. And if we could get the students to kind of go around and if they would tell us their names, we would appreciate that. And that way, our audience will know who each of those were. So if y'all will kind of go around and tell us each of your names, because we enjoyed that very much. And everyone, y'all can sit down. That way, y'all -[313.12][313.12][laughing] All right? Just tell your name and then you can go out that way.
My name is Samantha Gomez.
My name is Shayla Purvis.
My name is Sidney Mosley.
My name is Hans Kegel.
My name is Bennett Leader.
My name is Bailey Woods.
My name is Jasmine Woods.
My name is Ethaniel Foster.
My name is Alicia Gilliam.
My name is Madison Strobe.
My name is Colin Crawford.
My name is Camden Norbury.
My name is Breeden Patterson.
My name is Olivia Ruckstall.
My name is Caitlin Wright.
I'm Katie Ferguson.
My name is Kelsey Bryan.
My name is Madison Laurentio.
My name is Allison Trow.
My name is Taylor Barnes.
My name is Omaya Smith.
My name is Megan Thornton.
My name is Proku Glani.
And thank you for that wonderful performance.[371.12][371.12][applause] Okay? At this time, we are ready to set the agenda. And we have with us tonight, we have our H - our SRO Officer, Alicia Troutman, from Hickory Ridge Middle School. And she is with us this evening. We appreciate that. Now, do I have a motion to set the agenda? Now, there was one item that was - we had under action. It was 10.05 and 10.04. Both of those were put over under action. Is that correct?
Yes, and they're both second readings, so...
They're both second readings.
If y'all agree, we can make one motion.
We can just make one motion under that, to put that under action.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Also, I noticed in the closed session meetings, there was - they're supposed to be, or I was told, there was a discussion about teacher recognition. Is that in that, or am I just not seeing it?
It is, yes, sir.
Okay.
It is. It is in closed session, yes, sir. And that will be in closed session tonight. We will be discussing that.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair, if there's no objection, the items 10.04 and 10.05 could be put on the consent agenda.
They wanted them under action.
Okay, all right.
They wanted them under action. Yeah, that - there was a request to have it under action. Okay? All right.
Madam Vice Chair, I would make a motion that we move items 10.04 and 10.05, which are the two policies that you just mentioned, and move them to the action agenda.
Okay.
They are already on the action agenda. Oh, okay, they are. Okay. I thought that's what she was asking.
Just looking to combine them.
Just to combine them to one.
Okay. Well, I'll make the motion that we combine them to one item.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion, and Dr. Kirk seconded that. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor with those corrections, sign to approve the agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that unanimously passes. All right. We go on to item number five, which is recognitions. And we have Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month. We have Dr. Louder and Glenda Jones for Teacher of the Month.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. It is my pleasure to present our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for February. So before I do, I want to extend our sincere thanks to the Hillbush Ford General Manager, Tim Vaughn, and the Hillbush Ford for sponsoring this award. We are indeed grateful for their continued generosity and support. And Mr. Vaughn could not be with us tonight. Our Hillbush Ford -
I don't believe any of them off. Turners off. Carol?
Okay. Our Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for February is Elizabeth Thompson. Ms. Thompson, would you, your family, and any members of your school's administrative team who are here tonight, please come forward? Okay, is that it? I'm just waiting to see if there's any more. Okay. Elizabeth Thompson teaches Math 1 and 2 at the Cabarrus-Canaplis Early College High School. She was nominated for this award by a student who wrote. Ms. Thompson is not just a teacher. She does everything. And let me just say, everything is all capitalized, okay? So it's like an exclamation point. If you need something, most people will tell you to find Ms. Thompson, and they are right. She will help you. She teaches and also runs our yearbook club and sets up field trips. She is at school every day, many hours after everyone else is gone, working to make our school the best it can be for all of us. She is loved by everyone. If I have a problem that isn't about math, I can still go to Ms. Thompson for help, and she's there for me. She never misses any of our after-school events and comes to support us and cheer us on. She cares about us, and she cares about our school. No doubt, she should be named Teacher of the Month because she deserves it for all she does for her students at the school. Ms. Thompson, congratulations on your selection as the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month, and thank you for your dedication to your students and to your school. Now, please allow Dr. Louder to present you with your award.
I'm going to get a picture with everybody closer together. Four, three, one, two, three. All right.
And since we're not shaking hands tonight with the board, you could turn around and
Next, we have Ronnie Bean, Director of Communications and Information. We'll recognize the following students and staff as through the education - education through - excuse me, my tongue's getting tied here - impact through education award winners for their - for different schools.
Good evening. Tonight, we will present impact through education awards to students and staff at Charles E. Boger Elementary School and Mount Pleasant Middle School. The impact through education awards are presented with assistance from our friends at the Cabarrus Regional Chamber and Concord Trophy. We welcome broadcasting students tonight from Cox Mill High School, who will be producing this month's Impact Through Education Awards feature program for our TV channel 21. Their teacher is Ms. Cindy Perata. And now, on to tonight's awards. I'd like to invite any members of the Boger Elementary School administrative team to come forward to stand with their students and staff at this time. Our first honoree from Charles E. Boger Elementary School this evening is Genevieve Schultz. Genevieve is a fifth-grade student at Charles E. Boger Elementary and is assigned to Mrs. Beardsley's classroom. Genevieve brings joy to others and loves life. As proof of this, she wakes up happy almost every morning and always brings a smile to those she encounters. Genevieve loves the performing arts and has demonstrated her - and is demonstrated by her singing, dancing, and acting. She participates in ballet, jazz, and contemporary dance classes, and has performed in The Nutcracker since she was four years old. Genevieve takes piano and voice lessons and is performing in the upcoming production of The Aristocats at Boger Elementary. Genevieve loves Boger Elementary School and has participated in the talent show, served as a morning news anchor, is a member of Math Olympiad, and is competing on the Battle of Books team for the second consecutive year. She is on the AARNA role and works hard to learn the most she can while contributing to the learning environment of her classmates. A teacher describes her as an incredibly kind-hearted student who goes above and beyond inside the classroom and outside of school. She sets goals, gives 100% effort, and always helps others who need it. Genevieve loves God, her family, and her friends. Her favorite quote is, "For I know the plans I have for you," says the Lord, "plans to prosper you and to not harm you, plans to give you a hope and a future." Congratulations, Genevieve. You are an Impact Through Education Award winner for Charles E. Boger Elementary School.[921.12][921.12][applause] Just turn around and wave at the board members. Oh, you can walk by? Just follow. Our next Boger honoree is Grayson Will Banks. Would Grayson and his family please come forward? Grayson is a fifth-grade student at Charles E. Boger Elementary, and he is in Mrs. Garrison's homeroom class. He is a 10-year-old energetic, fun-loving student that always gives 100% to whatever he does. He loves fishing and playing baseball for the Cabarrus Bandits team. Currently, he is participating in the Basketball League for Odell Recreation. He enjoys playing with his friends and is always wearing a smile. He recently was awarded the lead part of Edgar in the upcoming school play, The Aristocats. His favorite subject in school is PE, but he also likes math and science. One of Grayson's teachers described him as a kind-hearted student who works hard at achieving his goals. He is very empathetic toward others and tries to help resolve problems on a daily basis. Congratulations, Grayson. Sorry, I got my plaques mixed up. Our next honoree from Charles E. Boger is Mrs. Lori Tarleton. Lori Tarleton is a first-grade teacher at Charles E. Boger and has been with the school since it opened in August 2007. She has 19 years of teaching experience, and 18 of those years have been with Cabarrus County Schools. While at Boger, she has served in many leadership roles such as grade-level chair, school improvement team member, mentor, and this year, she is hosting a student-teacher. Outside of school, Mrs. Tarleton enjoys reading, scrapbooking, and spending time with her family. Mrs. Tarleton says she knew at an early age that she wanted to be a teacher. She has always loved helping others, especially growing first-grade students to be the best that they can be. Mrs. Tarleton's colleagues describe her as a perfect example of a leader. She always puts students first and is the first person to lend a helping hand. Congratulations, Mrs. Tarleton, and thank you for making an impact at Through Education And our final honoree this evening from Charles E. Boger Elementary School is Mrs. Karen Ellisor. Would Mrs. Ellisor and her family please come forward? Mrs. Ellisor worked for Pilotex in Canaplis before joining Cabarrus County Schools. In May 2007, she was hired as the data manager for the new Charles E. Boger Elementary School. Currently, she is the only original staff member remaining in the front office area. She says the best part of her job is welcoming new families to Cabarrus County and to Charles E. Boger. She loves helping new parents enroll their kindergarten students and assuring them that everything is going to be just fine. A colleague described her as a person who goes above and beyond to assist incoming students and their parents. She's the first face new parents meet, and she is positive, caring, and considerate of every parent's needs. Over the years, Mrs. Ellisor and her husband have been devoted band parents and VEX Robotics volunteers at JM Robinson High School while their son attended school there. They continue to be involved with the robotics program and this year, will serve as judge coordinators for the Cabarrus County Robotics Competition. Congratulations, Mrs. Ellisor, and we thank you for making an impact through education Now, we will move on to our Impact Through Education Awards at Mount Pleasant Middle School. I'd like to invite any members of the Mount Pleasant Middle School administrative team to come forward to stand with their students and staff. Our first honoree from Mount Pleasant Middle School this evening is Brennan Jones. Would Brennan and his family please come forward? Brennan is quite a leader at Mount Pleasant Middle School. He is involved in the school community through his participation in athletics and clubs and organizations. He is always willing to help his classmates, teachers, staff, and visitors to Mount Pleasant Middle School. He is respectful in his words and actions and has an easy rapport with his peers. He is a positive role model and is a friend to everyone. He frequently includes others who are typically left out of activities by classmates. His coach says, "Brennan Jones is by far one of the most responsible and determined young men I have ever had the pleasure to work with." Brennan is the kind of young man who makes coaching him or teaching him a true pleasure. Often, Brennan provides an excellent moral compass for his fellow students. He shows by example the benefits of making smart choices and doing more than just what is required. I have watched him inspire others to be better around him and make an impact on those in need of an outreach hand. Congratulations, Brennan. Our next honoree from Mount Pleasant Middle School is Chloe Louder. Would Chloe and her family please come forward? Chloe is a role model at Mount Pleasant Middle School who leads with a level head, kind words, and kind actions. She is a student who always takes the initiative, both inside and outside the classroom. She is involved in the school community through both athletics and clubs and organizations on campus. She is always optimistic and displays a strong work ethic. She always demonstrates to others good moral values. Congratulations, Chloe. Our next Impact Through Education Award recipient for - from Mount Pleasant Middle School is Mr. Zachary Trivett. Would Mr. Trivett and his family please come forward? Zack has an innate ability to promote learning through student engagement. He consistently takes time to purposefully connect with his students. He recognizes the importance of how relationships and connections relate to the learning process. He seamlessly impacts learning day after day. Perhaps one of his most impressive traits is how Zack takes pride in his position and takes the initiative to go the extra mile when necessary in order to benefit his students. Whether he is coming into school early, staying at school late, attending a TSA or robotics competition on the weekend, or simply modeling a lesson during the day, one thing is certain: he always makes an impact. Congratulations, Mr. Trivett, and thank you for making the impact that you do at Mount And our final honoree this evening from Mount Pleasant Middle School is Mr. Joey LaMasters. Would Mr. LaMasters and his family please come forward? Joey LaMasters is not only a custodian at Mount Pleasant Middle School, he's also a coach. His presence at the school is felt in the hallways as well as throughout the athletic department. Joey's attention to detail shows daily through his job and his willingness to help students and staff is felt through his modest approach. Students and players know that they matter and know that they can count on him for matters both inside and outside the athletic arena. His positive attitude is on display daily as he joyfully and pridefully completes the duties within his job. He has been a great asset for Mount Pleasant Middle School, and his impact through education is appreciated by all who have the pleasure of knowing him.
Well Ronnie, I think you're going to stay with us. You have the King of the Court Special Presentation, and I think Michael Landers is going to be up there with you?
Yes. So if I could get Mr. Landers to please come forward? The annual King of the Court event celebrated its 10th anniversary this past October. What originally began as a school event for Mount Pleasant High School has grown in popularity and has expanded to include other area high schools. The premise is very simple. Students from our high schools in the surrounding area team up to volley for a cure for breast cancer. The event has raised thousands of dollars for local charities focused on breast cancer education and support. Tonight, I'm thrilled to introduce you all, or reintroduce you all, to Mr. Michael Landers, who has advised the students for this project since the beginning, and he's here tonight to give some special awards out to some beneficiaries. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Landers.
Thank you, Ms. Boone. If I could have the student representatives, Adam Goers from Hickory Ridge High School, Madeline Lovelace and Zeal Patel from J.M. Robinson, Kendall Redman and Olivia Smiley from Mount Pleasant High School, and Salma Van Dyke from Central Cabarrus High School. These are representatives tonight of all 10 schools. As an anecdote, I get the privilege of going to Tampa, Florida it was last year for AP scoring in June, and I'm immersed with 3,000 other teachers all in one area, and I'm always sporting my King of the Court Cabarrus County Schools stuff around every shirt. I got about 100 of them over the years. So I'm always wearing them, and I have teachers and instructors, "What's that? You know, tell me more about that. What is this?" And I always tell them, "Well, it's a charity event we do for breast cancer." "Oh, at your school?" And I said, "No, not just at our school, Cabarrus County Schools." And we involve 10 schools, and this was the first year we got to 10 schools. And I don't go usually looking for the schools. I get random emails in June, July, and August, "How do we get involved?" And last year, it just spread to Rowan County, and they got it going there. And so it's amazing to see the birth of this little thing at Mount Pleasant High School all of a sudden grow to 10 schools. And the biggest comment is, "How do you get one school to work together? You're getting 10 schools all working together." And I said, "That's where it is. 10 schools come together, rival schools in most cases, and they come together and work for one night and over the year for one cause, and that's to end breast cancer in Cabarrus County." So if everyone could give these young adults a round of applause. And new this year, we included an organization new to Cabarrus County and long overdue, an organization that supports breast cancer patients between their appointments. So if I could call Ms. Lori Love, Jessica Lee, Elizabeth Biggers, Gary Morris, and Ruby Carter up here. These ladies and this gentleman are the co-founders of a new organization called Pink Pals NC, an organization dedicated to the emotional and other support that patients need between their appointments. And once we heard about them starting up, we definitely dedicated a portion of the funds we give to this organization because half the battle is in the doctor's office, the other half the battle, or more, is emotional support between those meetings. And we're proud to bring them into this group this year for the first time with a donation of $2,250. And Ms. Love wants to say something.
My name is Lori Love, and I am so proud. This is our Board of Directors for Pink Pals NC. We are the first breast cancer support group ever in Cabarrus County. A lot of people find that hard to believe, and I did too. And we started it in August of last year, and at our last meeting, we were up to 55 members. And we have ladies and we have a man, breast cancer survivor. We have folks that have been survivors for 37 years that come to support others. We have people that are going through their chemo and their treatment, folks that have just been diagnosed, and also people that are living with stage IV metastatic breast cancer like I am. And so we are so excited to finally have a support group in Cabarrus County. We meet the fourth Tuesday of each month at the Village on Highway 29, two doors down from Big Lots, across from First Assembly, 2:00. And we would love to see anybody that needs breast cancer support. If you would like to volunteer to help us, we can use all the help that we can get, but please spread the word. We want to make this grow huge for our county and all surrounding counties too. Thank you.
The primary beneficiary of our efforts every year is Northeast Foundation and the Breast Health Center. And over the years, between all the fundraising, young adults like these up here have raised over $100,000 since we started, and we're really proud of that. And this year, in one event, they're proud to donate $14,000 to Kevin Laws and Heather Kinsel representing Northeast Foundation. Sorry, that is Jana Riley, representing the Breast Health Center. Thank you.
I just have to say, awesome. It is so great when we see our young people do projects like this, and this King of the Court is just fantastic. I just love it. Thank you so much. And it's great cause.
For the next agenda item, could we have Vice Chair Carpenter and Mr. Harrison join Dr. Louder?
And as you're walking down, we'll just say for a minute, there are many things that school board members take on when they decide to run for office, and many of those tasks are thankless tasks. One of those things that they're asked to do often is to train. So many people that are on the school board are not educators, and so they get trained in school law, they get trained in school finance, they get trained in many, many areas, and kind of continue that. So the North Carolina School Board Association Academy for School Boardsmanship has recognized two board members for successful completion of cumulative school board training for the 2016-2017 academy year. First is Board Member David Harrison, and he gets a certificate of achievement for 101 to 200 hours of training. And next is Board Vice Chair Carolyn Carpenter. She gets a Silver Award for between 700 and 800 hours of training.
And I might add, there's a couple other requirements along there too. In order to be recognized in the achievement levels, you have to have its 30 or 35 hours in just that prior school year. So even though many of us have 10 or 15 hours last year, we don't get a certificate because we didn't achieve that next annual level of requirement. So we always work towards meeting the goal as a collective board, but Carolyn and David went above and beyond last year. So thank you.
All right. Next, we have item 6.1, interval of minutes from January the 8th, January 16th, and January the 20th, annual planning session. And so now, did we get any kind of corrections, Eileen, or anything? Anybody send anything? It's already been made. All right. Do we have a motion, or do we have anything else?
So move, Madam Vice Chair, except the minutes as presented.
Second, okay. If not, is this for all of them, or just one? All of them? All of them? All right, we have a motion. We have a second for the 8th, January 8th, 16th, and 20th, of the work session, the business session, and the planning session. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Okay, that unanimously passes. All right, we're under reports now, 7.1. This is Career and Technical Education Highlights, and we have Mr. Rusty Parker here with us tonight to discuss this. And it looks like we have someone else. They don't have it listed. Dr. Crystal Hill?
I'm just going to introduce Mr. Parker.
Oh, okay.
Dr. Louder, Ms. Furtinbaugh, and members of the board, February is National CTE Month. We are delighted to have the opportunity for Mr. Parker to share about existing CTE programs and share about the future of CTE in Cabarrus County Schools. Mr. Parker has incorporated CTE staff, students, and business community members in this presentation. We are also very excited to have our high school principals and assistant principals here tonight to support their CTE programs at their schools. At this time, I'd introduce to you Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. I'm always excited to be up here when it's CTE Month, so thank you for mentioning that. I appreciate that. We're going to start things off with an award. This is one that I am very, very proud of. A few years ago, actually, I'll read this, in 1964, President Johnson established the Presidential Scholars Program. Some of you probably heard of that program. I think it was originally focused as a program for academics, but then in 2015, President Obama actually brought Career and Technical Education in under that umbrella. So this evening, we want to recognize a student who's been recognized across Cabarrus County Schools as our Presidential Scholar for CTE. I would like Ms. Erin Brinkley to come forward, please. And family. Erin is from Cox Mill High School, so if there's administrators here from Cox Mill too, I don't think I was... Hey, Mark is here. Hey, Mark. Each high school in Cabarrus County Schools nominated a senior this year for the CTE Presidential Scholars Program. The selection was based on outstanding scholarship, overcoming adversity while achieving high academic success, service involvement, leadership, and character. The 2018 Career and Technical Education Presidential Scholar from Cox Mill High School is Erin Brinkley. Congratulations. This past summer, I challenged our leadership team in Career and Technical Education to do one specific thing, and that was to come together as a team and define our vision and our mission for our department, because I firmly believe that you can't go forward if you don't know what your vision and mission would be. When I challenged them to do this, the first thing that rose to the top was that it has to be student-focused. So what I wanted to share with you this evening to get us started is the vision and mission statement for the Career and Technical Education Program. Our vision statement says, "Students prepared to pursue their direction and purpose." We felt very strongly that in CTE, our goal is to help students find their direction. A student that doesn't know their career direction will be lost. I can equate to that. That's kind of the way I was at 18-years-old. So I can relate to that. But we feel that it is our vision and also our mission to be student-focused. Our mission statement is, "Inspiring students, creating futures, and building community." To break that down into those three parts, if we don't inspire students, we feel like we're not going to get them to where they're supposed to be. So the first thing that we do in Career and Technical Education, leadership team or teachers, all of us involved in CTE, is to help inspire students to get to that next level. The second piece says, "Creating a future." I think if you don't have the right career, you're going to struggle in the future. Because, so again, speaking from personal experience, when you get your career direction going, a lot of things change in your life. And so we wanted kids to find their future. But the last piece is, we feel we're also very responsible to the business community. Our goal is in CTE is to also support the business community. So we felt that it was very important, and it's vital, for our mission statement to include a business piece. CTE by the numbers. This evening, I want to share with you a little bit about what CTE is across our school district. Right now, we have over 12,000 students enrolled in Career and Technical Education Programs. You can break that down between high school and middle school. There's almost 7,200 students enrolled in high school CTE programs and almost 4,900 students enrolled in middle school. To make that into a percentage, if you look, there's over 66% of the students enrolled in high school and middle school take Career and Technical Education courses while they're enrolled. I want to do something very specific. We have a really strong leadership team, and I include our teachers in that team. We have a team of career development coordinators, academy coordinators, a central office staff that I'm extremely proud of, and I would like right now, if you are a CTE teacher, a academy coordinator, a career development coordinator, please stand. Thank you very much. Just so you know, the Impact Through Education teacher that won, Zachary Trivett, is also a CTE teacher at Mount Pleasant Middle School. So he's also one of mine, so very proud of him. CTE is divided into eight programs. The federal or the US Department of Education, they actually break it down further into 16 career clusters. But in our district, we actually look at eight program areas, and in our district, we have all eight represented. So the ones that I have on the slide, we have courses in all eight of these programs within Cabarrus County Schools. One of the things that I was asked a few weeks ago to talk about Career and Technical Education is, what is the difference in a CTE pathway and a CTE academy? Because I think a lot of people think academies and CTE are the same thing, and they're not. They're really, an academy is actually a program within Career and Technical Education. So what I wanted to share just as an overview of Career and Technical Education is, what is a CTE pathway? We have four high schools that have automotive program. One of those is Hickory Ridge. If you go to Hickory Ridge right now, then the courses that you'd be taking if you were a student in automotive, you would start out in the ninth grade with Introduction to Automotive Service. In 10th grade, you would probably take Automotive Service 1. As a junior, you'd take Automotive Service 2, and a senior capstone course is probably Automotive Service 3. This is a CTE pathway, four courses in a concentration. A lot of times, you'll hear me talk about CTE concentrators. A CTE concentrator is a student that has finished four courses in that pathway. So when they finish that pathway, they're considered a CTE concentrator. And by federal guidelines, our goal in CTE is to produce as many CTE concentrators as possible, because that's really where our federal funding is based on that. That's really where our guidelines come from. So this is our goal, is to produce CTE concentrators. The second slide that I've got up here is actually what an academy is. To me, an academy is a beefed-up program of study. So whereas a CTE program could be at any school, one of our academies here that I've got listed is actually from J.M. Robinson, the one on the screen, they would be at one specific school. And if you notice, there's a lot of courses on that page. So a CTE academy is, we want students to take anywhere from six to eight courses in this pathway, so that once they leave, they have really a strong, rock-solid background in the theme of that academy. So this is actually an example of J.M. Robinson's. It's actually on engineering. So if you look, they've got Intro to Engineering as the ninth grade course, Advanced Manufacturing 1, Drafting 1, and Robotics 1 could be the sophomore course. And then for the 11th grade, they take the second level of all three of those, and then the 12th grade course is actually the capstone, which could be Principles of Engineering or 3D Solid Modeling. This evening, what we want to do, I'm actually going to be back up here in front of you again in May. So in May, when you see me, we'll be talking more about CTE programs as a whole, because I have to present the local plan that month. But what I wanted to do this evening was also to bring in our academy staff and let them talk about their academy and share with you the good things that they're doing in each one of the academies. So to introduce the first one, from Cox Mill High School, we have Michaela Steele. I think she's going to come speak for just a minute.
Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics. These are the keys to the future of not just American culture, but global worldwide culture. Hello, I'm Michaela Steele, senior at Cox Mill High School and a member of the Academy of Information Technology. And today, I would like to highlight all that the program has done for me and for students like me. I am what society calls a double minority. Being an African-American and a woman comes with its own set of responsibilities and setbacks. The Academy of Information Technology, or the AOIT program as we call it, has helped open many doors that I did not know could be opened. It is hard to sit back and explain everything that the AOIT program has done for me and students like me. We learned valuable information, and it's hard to pinpoint exactly how the program affects each and every one of us, because we're all different, and we all have different needs. I'm currently interning at the Diocese in Charlotte centered around video production. The same day that I learned about this internship was also the same day that I interviewed for this position. But since I was trained in interviewing skills and people skills, I was able to knock the interview out of the park and was offered a position at the diocese the same day. This is just a small glimpse to our AOIT program. Our program provides skills for students to not just strive in the classroom, but outside. And this is made possible by a host of people, which we have one here today, Ms. Holly Harris.
Hi. My name is Holly Harris. I'm the academy coordinator for Cox Mill High School. I know some of the numbers that we're putting up is the growth of our academy. That our academy, this For the Rising class, has 102 applicants. So you can see how each year we've grown. Each year, we've kind of tweaked the program, our successes, are definitely our advisory board, our enrollment, our cohorting, our community involvement, and we also bring our CCC on campus to continue to provide the opportunities for them to excel in the classroom, guest speakers, workplace learning opportunities, and we're also part of the Lenovo Scholar Network. And we do still have some challenges, but with the help of Mr. Parker and the administrative team there, and the other academy coordinators and CDCs across the county, that every year is better, every month is better. So we appreciate your time tonight. With that, I'll pass it along to you.
I appreciate it. Our academy coordinator from J.M. Robinson is actually Kristy Parlier, and I think she's another one that's under the weather, so I'm pinch-hitting for her tonight for J.M. Robinson. But if you look at the numbers on the board, J.M. Robinson is actually in its third year as an academy, whereas Cox Mill and Hickory Ridge will have graduating classes this year. J.M. Robinson Northwest and, who was the other one? Mount Pleasant. Thank you. They were all juniors, or the highest level on their list this year. J.M. Robinson, they have 38 freshmen this year, 28 sophomores, and 21 juniors. But the thing that I want you to see on this slide is the amount of money that has come into that academy this year. They have a very strong advisory board. We have staff from Corning, from S&amp;D Coffee, I think there's a Duke Energy person on the board. We have someone from NC State over at the Research Campus on their board. And so this year, the academy at J.M. Robinson, they were actually able to bring in, I think it was $10,000 from Corning Corporation to help pay for student stipends. They brought in $3,500 from S&amp;D Coffee, and the project that they're working on from S&amp;D Coffee is really unique. They are actually going to have student interns that make products for disabled students, and their project is specifically focused on how to support students with disabilities. And so that is their internship. That's what they're using as an in-house internship. They also this year, they were the recipient of a Jimmy Johnson Foundation Scholarship for $51,827. And that scholarship that they received, or that grant that they received from the Jimmy Johnson Foundation, is to create a makerspace lab where they could actually have 3D printers in there. The CTE teachers can come in there and use the facility to actually bring their students in and make different types of products. So they have done very well this year with strengthening their academy. The next academy that we have up is going to be from Mount Pleasant, so Lenny, I'm going to introduce Lenny Westmoreland, who's the academy coordinator from Mount Pleasant.
Hello. I'm Lenny Westmoreland. I am the academy coordinator for the Mount Pleasant Academy of Energy and Sustainability. We are a STEM 101 curriculum-based academy, engineering, and we are in our third year of existence with students. We were recently, in the past couple of months, featured in Brighter Futures, which is a national solar report. We were super excited about that, because we were the only high school in the country that was featured in that report. We now are working on something that I'm hoping some of you remember. We had a student come to you last year, McKay Burke, who presented his run he was putting together to raise funds for precious plastic, which is a group of guys out of the Netherlands came up with this idea about building these machines to take recycled plastics and turn them into reusable products. So he did, he was able to put the run together, and through all wonderful donations, we were just recently able to purchase all of the parts for those precious plastics machines. They've been ordered, they're on their way in, and the students are super excited. And the beautiful thing about this is the students are building the machines themselves. That's what it's all about. It's not about buying the machines. They build the machines, we take the plastics, we grind them up through the machines that the students have created, and then we turn, whatever their mind can imagine and think of, they can turn it into those usable products. So that's what we're excited about, and our plans are to be the first precious plastic station in the southeastern United States. And we're going to be. Thank you.
Thanks, Lenny. The next academy is actually the Academy of Health Sciences and Biotechnology from Northwest Cabarrus High School. And I'd introduce you to Mr. Peter Kim, who's the academy coordinator.
Good evening. My name is Peter Kim. I'm the academy coordinator at Northwest Cabarrus High School, Academy of Health Sciences and Biotechnology. We actually started four years ago as a biotechnology academy, as many of you are aware, and then the following year, we added in the NAF Health Sciences Program. With that, we've seen a steady rise in enrollment and applications, and I believe this year, through the program choice, or school choice program, we are actually celebrating our highest amount of applicants into our program. With that, we've formed some strong partnerships in the area with our local Cabarrus Health Alliance, to our healthcare system at CHS Northeast, as well as some area health science programs in higher education. With that, those partners on our board have been able to provide a lot of opportunities in work-based learning for our students, in the form of guest speakers coming into the classroom, job shadows. Recently, February 2nd was Job Shadow Day, and we were able to send some students to Cabarrus Health Alliance to shadow some health professionals, as well as internships. And so with that said, looking forward, some challenges that we can see, and I think this speaks for all the academies in Cabarrus County, finding internships, especially paid internships for our students, is going to be a challenge. Included in that, we would love to expand our partnerships in the area to include our other big healthcare system, Novant Health, and also partnering up with some smaller local clinics and primary care centers. Thank you.
And then our next NAF academy is from Hickory Ridge. I'll introduce you to Robert Machado.
Hello, Board. I'm Robert Machado, academy coordinator at Hickory Ridge High School. And today, I'm not going to speak too much, because I brought Josh Harper with us. He's a senior within the academy, and he is also the president of our student board for our Academy of Hospitality and Tourism. So without further ado.
Hi. I remember sitting in my eighth-grade art class when some guy came in to tell us about this academy. I'll never forget the question he asked us that left me lost. Who do you want to be? Not what do I want to be, but who? Not the job I wanted or the school I wanted to go to, but the character that I wish to exhibit. Fast forward one year, I was starting to like this academy and was anxious for leadership. I founded the Student Leadership Board to relieve stress from my mentor and to provide my peers with the most opportunities possible to start down the road for success. We were a young program with no classmates to look to for an example, no templates to work off of, and no experience. So with this, we dove right in and got to work. Fast forward another two years. I'm a junior now. I've taken six academy classes. With the help of my peers, I've planned seven field trips, over 100 hours of community service, and multiple fundraising efforts. It's time now for an internship. I completed my 120-hour summer internship at ESPN Charlotte doing marketing. One day, while I was hard at work writing company verticals, my boss came up to me and asked me what kind of business that my parents owned. I looked at her confused and asked her what she meant. She told me my parents must own a business. How else would I have this much knowledge and comfortability with talking with strangers at 17-years-old? How else would I be able to write a full synopsis on a prospective sports program and present it with ease in front of the general manager without some kind of lifelong experience or example to look to? Well, I live on a horse farm. My parents, my mom is a horse-riding instructor. I don't come from a market, or marketing, or business background. Most of my family did not even attend college. I told her I come from a tight-knit group of like-minded students with a passion for success. I told her I come from a program where the mentors care and the teachers teach real-world applicable skills. I told her I come from the Academy of Hospitality and Tourism and have developed the skills that I exhibit through the opportunities presented to me by those teachers, mentors, and employers who want to see me succeed. Upon completion of my internship, I was offered a job at ESPN Charlotte, which I happily took, making me the youngest employee ever in the company. So here I am now. Last semester of senior year, almost eight academy classes under my belt, over 200 hours of community service, I'm polishing the skills that I've learned in the classroom and eager to apply them in the business field. I feel that I've grown in a multitude of ways, and now, almost five years later, I feel ready to answer the question that once dumbfounded me. Who do I want to be? I want to be a leader, a team player, and a friend. I want to be an example of integrable business and strong work ethic. I want to be a lifelong learner and someone who can inspire action in others. I want to drive positive change on a global scale and strive to not only meet my full potential, but to help others meet theirs. And most importantly, I want to be a creative innovator that can stare down the problems of tomorrow and say aye and future-ready. Thank you.
And Josh, you can be a CTE teacher if you want to be one, too. I'll make that happen. One of the goals that I had for this school year was to bring the Public Safety Academy into the open enrollment process. So the next academy that you'll get to hear from is from Concord, and I'm very proud of what they're doing at Concord. They realigned their program of study, and this year, there now is an application that the students that come into that academy are part of the open enrollment process. So to hear her talk about the Public Safety Academy at Concord is Ms. Courtney Cubit. And the gang, they're all here.
Yes. We are very excited to be a part of Program of Choice this year. This is our year of planning, so I brought along with me our academy teacher, Philip Patterson, and then one of our students, Austin Allman. So we are very excited. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Patterson to talk about some of the great certification opportunities that students have.
Thank you very much. For our academy, the intro course is Public Safety 1. We teach every aspect of public safety within that course, so students can make a decision on what career they want to go to, whether it's being an attorney, law enforcement, security, forensics. We teach everything within that initial course. If the students enjoy Public Safety 1, they can take Public Safety 2, which is Community Emergency Response Team. They learn how to help citizens in a disaster as a team. If students choose to, they can go to our fire academy, our fire section, where they learn firefighting. They certify just like any other state firefighter, and they obtain almost a complete certification except for two courses. So when they graduate high school from that program, and an employer looks at their resume, they realize that half of the training has already been done in the high school level. So all they need, really need to do is pick up that person and put them on a fire engine. We also have a EMT 1 and 2 program where they learn emergency medical technician courses. In our public safety course, we teach all four required FEMA courses, which you have to have in public safety. In the law enforcement program, which I teach, I teach a Law 1 program, which is basic rookie school. The students learn criminal law, use of force, they learn how to write a report, so they really learn the whole gamut. This year, in our Law 2 course, we've actually changed the program to where we're now certifying them in private protection. So if the students choose to, they can sit for a national certification at the end of this course that's recognized by the security professionals. We also bring in public speakers. We've had everybody from the FBI, ATF, US Marshal Services, to fraud investigators, private security. I try to bring in as many people as possibly can to touch those students and try to make them interested in a career field. So with that, I'll turn it back over.
Hey, my name is Austin Allman, and growing up, I was always one of those kids where when you saw firefighters, that's what you wanted to do. And I had a neighbor that graduated from Concord, I don't know how long ago, but he would always come home and tell me what they did every day in that class. And I told my parents, I'm going to Concord High School, and I'm taking the Fire Academy. And thankfully, I was in their district. And I've taken Public Safety 1, Fire 1, Fire 2, and I'm taking Law Enforcement 1 right now. And to finish my high school career, I plan to take Law Enforcement 2, EMT 1, and EMT 2. And taking these classes, you get many certifications. Like I have the NIM certifications from FEMA that are required to get on a fire department. I have many of my fire certifications. And it's a great program to get hands-on experience with the actual tools that you'll be using when you get a job. And with all this training, I got fourth place in the state in Basic Firefighting for Skills USA. And I'm involved in many explorer programs at Kannaplis Fire Department, Gaston College, and Concord Fire Department. At Kannaplis, I'm known as the Concord Kid, because I know all the answers, and I'm always ahead of everybody to do what's required. And when I get my license next month, I'm planning to get on Allen Volunteer Fire Department. Hopefully, when I graduate with these certifications and the involvement with the fire departments, I'll be able to get a job at a city fire department. Thank you.
I'll compliment Chief Patterson. Every time I'm at Concord, he's got something really unique going on. I always get scared when the SWAT team shows up, because you never know. He's teaching, but it is a little nerve-wracking when SWAT team shows up. But they do a great job at Concord. I want to introduce to you next is...
Did we ever get our fire truck that we were looking for?
What's that?
Did we ever get the fire truck we were looking for?
We are ordering one. We have one that we're tracking down, or trying our best to. So I've already been in touch with Art about selling the ones we have, so yeah, we're trying to get it in place. And we need an ambulance, too, so we're still working on the ambulance, too. As of right now, we don't have a CTE-focused academy at Central Cabarrus, and so I wanted Mr. Crook to talk in general about the CTE programs at his school, because he has the largest CTE staff at his school, and they do an exceptional job. When you look at their numbers, and I'll show you and let him talk, but they do an amazing job in Career and Technical Education at Central Cabarrus. So, Mr. Crook?
Thank you, Mr. Parker, and thank you, Board. First of all, let me thank Mr. Parker for letting me go last and follow in this fine group of educators and students. I don't think I can top what they've said. However, at Central Cabarrus High School, we do have every program represented. We have 18 Career and Technical Education staff members. We have a CDC. I think everybody knows we also have a STEM Magnet Program, which ties into CTE quite well. If you look at the numbers, STEM or CTE is alive and well at Central Cabarrus High School, has been for 51 years, and will continue to be. We have 1,670 students approximately at Central Cabarrus, and 1,270 of them are involved in Career and Technical Education classes. So I would say well over 70% of our student body participates in CTE courses. And of those students, during the 2016-17 year, 100% of them graduated with a career pathway. So we do an excellent job, have an excellent staff. We have state award winners, we have national award winners, we have students that have gone to Dubai, we may have a student going to Russia in a couple of years to participate in World Skills USA. So CTE courses are alive and well at Central Cabarrus High School, and maybe one day, we'll have that NAF Academy to add to it. So, thank you.
The last academy that I want to talk about is mine. It's still on paper. And so I wanted to officially present to you this evening the STEM Academy of Aviation and Aerospace. When Dr. Louder and Dr. Hill spoke to me about what programs we put at a brand-new high school, I really go back to the drawing board and look at what does the business community in Cabarrus County, what did they see? What did they forecast? What's coming our way? And if you go to the Economic Development Commission's website, you'll see that they have very clean industries targeted. There's five of them specifically. Energy is one, and a lot of them follow along with what the Charlotte Regional Partnership is doing regionally. So you'll see all of them very, very similar. But I know for a fact that there's several aviation and aerospace programs going on right now around the state of North Carolina. Very strong is in Guilford County, Winston-Salem Forsyth has one, Union County now has one. But I wanted to start a program that was focused specifically on industry. If you look at... If you look at the curriculum for the other ones around the state, they've been created by educators. I wanted a program that was created from industry. So last fall, I went to Dallas, Texas, and I visited the Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association, AOPA. They had their conference in Dallas at American Airlines corporate office. And so, what I found out was they were actually creating a curriculum from industry that is in partnership with career and technical education at the national level. So the people on their board helping create the curriculum are CTE staff from the national level. So I thought, "This is exactly what I was looking for." The cool thing about it is the curriculum was free. I don't have to pay a nickel for it. So, that was the seller for me right there. But I wanted to share with you a few minutes what we've already put together to get ready for this academy coming in the fall of 2019, and to kind of give you an overview of what it would look like when it's on, when it actually is not on paper anymore. Why aviation and aerospace? Between now and 2036, there will be a shortage of one hundred and seventeen thousand pilots. When I was at the conference in Dallas, the number that stuck in my brain the most was the staff that was there from American Airlines said that when the next fifteen years, over seventy-five percent of their active pilots could retire. That's a staggering number. They could lose that many pilots, that many people. They also said pretty much the same number for technicians, and you'll see on the screen there's a shortage of one hundred and eighteen thousand just technicians. So what we're looking to do is to fill those gaps. And if you look at Cabarrus County, where we're situated with Charlotte Douglas being such a monstrosity of an airport, and then also Concord Regional being one of the top airports in the state of North Carolina, then we could really not turn a blind eye to what this industry is telling us, is that they're gonna need employees. And as a CTE director, this is my number-one goal, to line up students with industry. And so this is the direction that we have for this academy. Just to skip through some of the numbers, you'll see how the drop has been from 1980 to now as far as the active pilots and their certifications. Skipping on, I actually think I got my number wrong. I've read two different reports that said Concord Regional is the ninth busiest airport, but I saw one yesterday that said it's the fifth. So, Mr. Walter, has it moved up to five? It's what?
Fifth.
Fifth. I thought, "Okay, I'll adjust that and send you a new PowerPoint." I'm sorry, I made that mistake. But it's got over ninety thousand passengers coming in and out of that, and I think from an airport that started in, what, 1994, it's doing pretty good.
Yeah, it's over one hundred and twenty thousand now.
I should've called you before I did this. Let's skip to the next slide, talk about curriculum. AOPA is the Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association. Mr. Walter came by my office one day, and we talked about this program, because it is a very well-respected association in the aircraft industry. And again, I said that they, when they were doing this, they were really lined it up with career and technical education curriculum, lined it up perfectly the way we put it together. So to show you a little bit about what it looks like, AOPA had a three-pronged direction. They wanted to create curriculum for aviation/airspace academies. They also wanted to offer scholarships to students to give them that opportunity. And then, they wanted to make donations from their foundation to schools that are actually looking to create this type of academy. So the bottom three bullets on this slide are exactly what they have been creating. And they are putting together a hundred thousand dollars' worth of scholarships annually, so that at least twenty students receive in five thousand dollar scholarships, that they will receive those each year. To look at their curriculum and their pathways, with the top bullet at the top, it says there's one for pilots, which is one that we will probably have. There's also one that says aerospace engineering, which is the backbone pathway, like I talked about earlier pathways. The aerospace piece will be the backbone pathway that they all take. And then students will either take pilot as the second pathway, or either unmanned aerial systems, which is drones. So again, we gotta look and see if the drones piece is really feasible, or if we need to take that as a technician route. To me, and maybe we need to talk, but I would think it'd be more technician-focused. But those are the three pathways for the academy that they've already put together for us. Here's what the curriculum looks like. It's laid out perfectly like I presented earlier. The freshmen actually take Principles of Aviation and Aerospace. They all take the same course. The second semester will be Exploring Aviation and Aerospace. So when this comes in, it'll be a seventy-five-student cohort that they can come in and take those courses at ninth grade. Tenth grade, it's already laid out all the way, perfect pathways all the way through their senior year. So Rusty don't have to do all this work, it's already laid out really slick. Here's what they're doing now, which is my favorite part. This current year, the first course is for freshmen is in a pilot stage. So the first course is in seventeen-eighteen, they're being field-tested right now. So the courses have been created for freshmen, so schools around the nation are actually piloting this course, and then some are field-testing this course as we speak this school year. So if you'll look, when we opened a school in the fall of 2019-20, where will we be? We'll have a curriculum that's already tested, it's already field-tested, it's already ready to go. So all I've got to do is say, "Yes, we want the curriculum," and it's already available to us free of charge. The reason that they offer it free of charge is because they have major companies like American Airlines, United Parcel Service, Federal Express, that's already backing them on this curriculum and donating to their foundation, so they're able to keep it running free of charge. And if you see on that slide, every single year that we add a grade level to our academy, they're adding the next course, so we just move as they move. I want to show you a little bit about the first course, you kind of get a taste of what they're gonna be teaching. The first course is actually the intro piece, so it's Aviation/Aerospace Today. What does it look like today? What do you see in aviation and aerospace industry? Also, Taking Flight is the second one, and then it's got the Theory and Practicality of it. I'm sure the Wright brothers are stuck in there somewhere around Unit Three. And it says, "Number Four is to the Stars." What does the jet age look like? What does spacecraft look like? Those types of things, and then Creating the Future. The second course is Exploring Aviation and Aerospace, and it's all about safety. So there's a big safety component in this curriculum. Exploring Aviation Careers, there's Innovations and Problem Solving, and then the bottom pieces, again, is some career piece. So they've laid it out very structured, very, very well. I like how there's five units each course, and it's a perfect semester setup. Next steps is Mr. Walter's gonna come meet with me and be on my advisory board, right? Thank you. We're putting together an advisory board right now for this. So I've also talked to Art Whitaker, who's in Transportation, and also Chuck Taylor, they both said they would help too. But also several other people. It's funny, once I started talking about this, that the people that started popping out of the woodwork saying they wanted to help. So I hope I started a little bit of conversation talking about this, because a lot of people have really asked. At the conference in Dallas, Texas, I even had a teacher from Tennessee come hand me his business card and say, "You're in, near Charlotte down there at Concord? Out here, take my card, I'd love to come teach for you." So it's been a really nice thing to have happen. So, our next steps are to follow up with the curriculum. This coming summer, I actually have to submit the curriculum to the Department of Public Instruction. So when I do my presentation in May, you'll see me talk about this again. So we have to present it actually physically to DPI before August, I'll say that. So you'll hear a little bit more about it. And so people have asked me about what type of teacher teaches this? What do you do? In career/technical education, there's, under Trades and Industrial Education, there is a specialized license, and that's exactly where this teacher's license falls, under specialized. So it will be a Trades and Industrial Education teacher. So I've already kind of got that laid out and started working on that. To wrap up, and that's really it in a nutshell, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to take any questions about the academy, or any of the academies that we talked about this evening. But before I wrapped up this evening, and it is CTE Month in February, I did want to take an opportunity to say thank you for all that you do for us in CTE. Without fail, when I come to a board meeting or we have something for CTE, all of you come ask me a question or say, "How's this going?" Mr. Schumaker's asked me several times, "How's this going?" Or we talk about it, Dr. Kirk does too. So thank you, Ms. Chair. Several people come ask me questions, and I really appreciate that. But also, I've got Cabinet in the room too. Thank you for how you support CTE, because I know a lot of you have considered, "We really do an aviation and aerospace, and I love the excitement that this thing has created." So, to all of you in the room, thank you very much for how you support CTE. We appreciate it very much.
Thank you so much. Board members, is anybody having questions of Rusty? You do a wonderful job, and our children are very fortunate. And I get excited every time I, all you academy teachers and everything, I get excited every time I go anywhere or do anything. I brag about every one of you every time I go somewhere. But does any board member have any questions? Okay.
Sure, I mean, yes.
Do you?
Again, my hat's off to all, every one of you, the work that you're doing with our students. I mean, not every student needs to go to a four-year college institution, and this is a wonderful opportunity that we have to get kids engaged. And I'm just thrilled about the aviation program. Obviously, it's a passion of mine, I've been trying to promote for years, and I think it's a great opportunity for more additional students to get involved. So just thank you for the work that you put into it.
Thank you for everything you did. Okay, next, Adam.
Ms. Carpenter, can I make one comment? I just want to say how much we appreciate Dr. Hill and Rusty's leadership in kind of working on this and working on the new academy as they've tried to kind of move us forward. And also, to all the academy coordinators that are here and the students here, how much we appreciate it. They are the link, that really, they are the first-line link to our business community. And I think what we find out often with them is that businesses want to be around kids, they want to be around students, right? And when you connect them, they have come out to really, truly support them in all the ways that they possibly could. And these guys really are the connection for that, and they're the reason that the academies and CTE has moved so forward. I also want to say, if Tammy Gamble and Melanie Ritter will just stand up for a second, they came to, and Tammy does our accountability with CTE, and Melanie is instructional specialist, they actually came to the parent meeting. We met with the parent group that we meet with once a quarter last week to just present about CTE and all the possibilities possible in CTE, because so many, so many people have some misconceptions in that area. And they kind of blew the lid off of the room there. The parents just went bananas over that, wanted to stay longer than they could to talk about the opportunities in CTE. And then just so happened, one of the parents that was in the room who had a student that was very active at Hickory Ridge in their CTE program, and also won the Morehead last year. So coincidentally, just kind of, they all supported that. So all of this group here really does a tremendous job for us, for our county, and most importantly, for our students. As you can see by the three students that spoke, we have some kids that are truly superstars. So thanks to everybody, just want to say how much we appreciate what you do and how much we appreciate CTE.
The only question I have, I know we've been doing, working with the developing of the advisory board, I know a lot, do we need to do anything on that?
It's coming up.
It's coming up? Okay, well, I knew that we had, is it?
Yep.
Is it zoned down there? I see the reading, but-
Ten oh seven.
Oh, ten oh seven? Okay, I just knew we had that. Thank you. Okay, thank you very much then. Okay, we are now to seven oh two. Ms. Burton-Ball, do you have anything to say, or?
No, I confirmed that Dr. Lauter's going to cover one item, so we'll let me continue.
Okay. Well, then, I will go to seven point oh three, Superintendent's comments, Dr. Lauter.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter, I appreciate it. I have several things we do want to share tonight. So we want to begin with congratulations to Irvin Elementary School and our former Teacher of the Year, Emily Francis. Last week, Emily went out to Los Angeles, California to appear on The Ellen Show and talk about her work as an ESL teacher here in Cabarrus County. During the taping, Chobani, the yogurt company, and the founder of the Chobani Company is a Turkish immigrant. Chobani, I think he said on the show, has about two thousand employees now since he started working there, but who also said that he immigrated to the United States, didn't speak English well, and also learned how to speak English by watching Friends and The Ellen Show, which is ultimately what Emily stated. So if you're not aware of Emily's story, she truly does have a personal story that is just amazing. You could make a movie out of her life story. And then she's chosen to spend her life working with ESL students. So it's pretty amazing, and that culminated with the Chobani Foundation giving a hundred thousand dollar donation to Irvin Elementary School. So we just want to say again how much we appreciate Chobani and Ellen, and most importantly, Emily and everything that she does for our students. So thank you very much. As we said earlier, February is Career and Technical Education Month. We celebrate CTE staff who work every day to prepare students for graduation. CTE programs encompass classroom learning, certification, work-based learning opportunities, and internships, as you just heard earlier here today, in fields including information technology, healthcare, manufacturing, hospitality management, and now, as we said, we're moving into aviation. So again, we want to celebrate that. I had the great fortune of being a high school principal, and I know what CTE does, but sometimes it is this hidden gem that sometimes people need to discover, so we want to promote that as much as possible. We're also celebrating School Driver Appreciation Week this week. Cabarrus County is fortunate to have dedicated and professional bus drivers. They have the important task of transporting our students safely to and from school each day, and often are the first people that greet our students when they get on and begin the school day. February is Love the Month, Bus Month nationally, which raises awareness and appreciation for the safe experience of riding the bus to and from school. Last week was National School Counseling Week. Our school counselors make significant contribution to the lives of our students. They work closely with students at all levels and help them identify strengths and areas for growth. They partner with parents, with caregivers, teachers, administrators, to bring out the best in our students. Again, a group that is often overlooked sometimes and very important, and often overworked when you think many of them have a four-hundred-student caseload to try to form an individual relationship with students. So they do a great job, and we want to say how much we appreciate everything that they do. I do want to mention that we have seen an alarming number of instances where students have used synthetic materials for vaping in the last month. Ingesting synthetic substances can have frightening results. To date, we had fourteen Cabarrus County students who have been transported by ambulance to hospitals as a result of vaping synthetic materials at school. We're working quickly to address this situation by sharing information with students about the dangers of inhaling synthetic substances and modifying our drug and alcohol policy to include these substances with other prohibitive items at school. Middle and high school students received a letter to take home to their parents today that outlines the issue and our response as a district. We've added information to the school health section of our website. We also will continue to work with our partners at the Cabarrus Health Alliance, emergency management, and healthcare professionals, as well as law enforcement, to educate students about this dangerous trend. We will soon begin accepting applications for membership on our realignment committee. As we open West Cabarrus High School, we will be changing the boundaries for some high schools as we get a student population. The public is invited to apply. Twenty to twenty-five members will be selected to participate on this committee. Membership will be represented equally across the county. Committee members will focus on providing a realignment recommendation for West Cabarrus High School and the new Southwest Elementary School. The application will be available on our district website next week. We are also in the midst of a brutal flu season. A recent report ranks the Charlotte metro area, which includes Cabarrus County, as number two in the nation for flu cases. Please do all that you can to prevent the spread of germs by keeping sick children at home from school, frequently washing your hands, covering your coughs and sneezes. Our partners at the Cabarrus Health Alliance have provided us with guidance about flu prevention. You can find the information on the district website at www.cabarrus.k12.nc.us. And finally, I want to remind everyone that Friday, February sixteenth, will be a full day of school for all students to make up time lost during the January snowstorm. It was originally scheduled to be a half-day, and now Friday will be a full day. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Lauter. Did we have any cards for guest speakers? Okay, well, since we, do I need to read that since we do not have guest? Okay, since we don't have guest speakers, I will not read that. And I will move on to nine point one, that is approval of the February twelfth Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, which that consent agenda consists of the first reading of policies, twenty-four hundred, thirty-four sixty, fifteen ten, eighteen hundred, three thousand, forty-six hundred, sixty-three twenty-one, sixty-three forty, sixty-five twenty, prevail of second, thirty-one ten, seventy-two forty, forty-two forty, seventy-five ten, seventy-eight ten, seventy-nine hundred, seventy-five forty, plus, we had the approval of ours for Rob Walters, plus the calendar for early college.
And Vice Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as noted.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Schumaker, seconded by Dr. Kirk. Any further comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay. All right, that unanimously passes. All right, we have ten point one, or zero one, budget amendments, and we have, who's going to do budget amendments? Nobody?
Yeah, I think I will.
Huh?
Yeah, we can.
All right, do we have any questions on this?
Well, we had an objection to the local fund.
I know we had our objection to...
To which one?
The local fund.
The local fund.
I don't think the 150,000, yes, contracted services was appropriate use of the money, so I would be voting no for that portion.
Yeah, I think you could just vote no on it if you want to.
Okay.
We already voted on that item, though.
Ms. Carpenter, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the February budget amendments as written.
Second.
All right, well, you're just going to, now, this is for all of them? For the, for every one of them? Okay, so...
Lumpen them in.
Well, if you're going to lump them in, he's going to vote no for all of them. Do you want to pull out something? Okay, all right, we have a motion, we have a second, to approve the budget amendments. All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
All right, you have, you have, that's...
Five to two, pass.
Five to two, to pass. Okay, all right, we go to item number 5.3. No, that's five, that was 5.1. Go to 5.2. This is, I mean, 10.2, excuse me. The approval of the salary study recommendations. All right, see, is there anybody to talk about that, or is that too much?
I think it's the same as before. I don't think we had any questions this week about it. I know you discussed it last week. So if you have a specific question, we can, I think we can answer, but we haven't, we haven't heard any questions this week.
And this was the, mostly on the transportation budget, because that was basically what was suggested. Do we have any questions on it? All right.
No, I would move to approve.
Yeah, okay, I will, okay, we got a motion to, Rob makes a motion to approve. Second, I will get two seconds, okay? Well, I...
You can take turns.
Okay, Dr. Kirk, second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, that unanimously passes. All right, we have 10.3, this is approval of policies on the first read. All right, and I think we only have, what, three? All right, Ms. Reimer.
We did not receive any questions, but did make board requested changes, so...
All right.
Any further comments?
Board members, do you have any questions? I think we have policies 2310. Is there any questions on 2310?
Ms. Carpenter, I'd make a motion that we go ahead and approve all three policies as listed.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Schumaker, seconded by Mr. Harrison. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, that unanimously passed. Okay, that one didn't hurt. Okay.
So this is 10:04, it's way out of 5 was...
Okay, all right, then we have the 10-point, well, 10.4 and 10.5 we put together, that was an action one, right?
Ms. Carpenter, I'd make a motion that we approve both 10.04 and 5, because we did combine them together.
Okay.
And approve all of those policies as...
Well, that was the only one we combined together. The other ones are separate ones, well...
Ms. Furtinbaum, you had an issue with one of those, didn't you? The Business Advisory Council, did you get, are we good with that?
No.
The Advisory Council's on down, that's on, that's seven.
The members are on the other agenda item.
Oh, that's separate. All right, 10.4 and 10.5 then is one.
Right.
That's one item.
That's my motion.
Well, all right, we have a motion to approve that, we have a second on that. Second by Dr. Kirk, he's down there nodding his head. We have any further comment on those, that one? All right, do we have a motion to approve that?
You do.
All right, do, all right, take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, that one does. All right, we got 10.8, I mean, 10 point, I mean, that was seven, I mean, we got six. All right, 10.6. That one is approval of revised, for approvals for the academy schedule. Do we have a motion on that one? Was there a problem on that one? I don't think there was a problem on that one, was there?
No, I think he just wanted an action.
Yeah, it was just an action item.
Just an action.
So I'll make the motion that we approve the CCS Academy Calendar for 2018-19.
Do I need to abstain from that?
Huh?
Did we get an answer for that?
From the calendar?
Not the calendar. We're doing the list.
We're doing the calendar.
We're doing the calendar. I'm good with calendar.
The cal, this is the calendar. This is the approval of the revised previous approved CCS Academy Calendar for 2018-2019.
I did have a question, though. Did we look at the Cumberland County Schools?
Yes, sir.
Is that something our committee could look at, or have they already done that?
Okay, we did pull that calendar, as well as another one that another board member sent us. I think we would take those to our calendar committee to look at possibly for the 2019-2020 school year. There were some big challenges for us based, some transportation-wise, because we're on a tier system, increasing school days, those kind of things, but certainly something for our calendar committee to look at.
And that's just because there was a, I guess, a school district that's trying to get their testing done prior to the Christmas holiday.
That is correct. There are at least two out there that were able to find right how they were doing.
And they're under the same restrictions we're under, where you can start days and where you can end days.
They are, and we will take to the calendar committee what they're doing differently than we are and see if there's an interest to push it toward you guys to look at.
Well, we always wanted to try to do it bef, I mean, have we not? I mean, that's been one of our biggest things of having a flexible schedule, because we've always, that's always been the thing, fighting for a flexible schedule, because we've always stated that our children lose a lot of their, I mean, forget what we've taught them by the time they get back from vacation. And that's why we've always wanted to have a flexible schedule.
Yes, that is correct. However, what we're giving up in some of these calendars may be 10 academic school days, maybe adding more time to a regular school day, so there's, there's large impacts to a district when you look at it. And so we have to see, is that something that Cabarrus County can do and do efficiently within what, you know, what we're trying to do for our kids. So certainly something for our committee to look at, but nowhere close to recommend anything there now.
Ms. Reimer, again, for this calendar year that we're talking about, 2018-19, is there a springtime election day as well as a springtime runoff day in this calendar, or any flexibility? I just don't see them called that.
Correct, there is not, and based on the information that I have received from the Board of Elections, there is no election in this coming, not this year, but the following year during the springtime. So there is, at this point in time, there is not.
It would all fall in November?
Yes.
In that year?
Yes, versus the spring, correct.
I'm ahead of myself then, thank you.
So we will not be, we'll not be looking at March or May there.
Only be the November date, pardon me.
Correct, correct, yes, sir.
Okay, did we have a motion on this then?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, wait a minute, I got the video on, okay. All right, all right, we had a motion by...
I'll make the motion for the top.
Okay, motion, who?
I actually made the motion.
All right.
I was waiting on a second.
All right. All right, motion by Mr. Schumaker, seconded by Mr. Walters. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Did you say no?
Six, one.
Okay, six, one, with Mr., I was about to say Mr. Vince. Miss Carolyn, okay. Anyway, six to one. All right, next, we have 10.7, and this is the Advisory Council. This is approval of Business Advisory Council. Now, we did have some discussion on that. Are we, where are we at with that? Is someone going to tell us where, what stage we've got?
I have a question, because the name that I submitted was put under Business Support Partners. I don't know how that is different than the Business and Industry Partners. I intended it to be in the first group.
We can move it, that's no problem.
Okay.
So how are these folks selected again?
All right, what, all right, your question was answered. All right, Rob. What's your question?
How did we select these folks?
Okay. These individuals were recommended by Mr. Parker, our CTE Director, and also Darryl Adams, the CTE Director in Kannapolis City Schools, as well as a community organization here in Concord. Excuse me?
What community organization?
It was Leadership Cabarrus.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Powell, did you have any questions? Okay.
Not at this time.
Not at this time. All right, we'll start down with this end.
Have no question, call for question.
Okay, well, wait a minute, let me sit there, let's give everybody a couple... I know that we had had a lot of discussion on this, and I want to make sure that I do give everybody an opportunity, because this has kind of been back and forth. So I do want to give everybody the opportunity, if they do have any further questions, because we've been around a lot on this one. Mr. Harrison?
Dr. Hill, we had a great presentation a moment ago from Rusty, as well as many of the teachers, but I got the impression that each of the academies has a very strong academy organization behind it, who are a lot of private individuals. Is there any kind of plan or, I don't mean mission statement, but some kind of plan to integrate the, this council with each of the academy support groups, if I can put it that way? I mean, they're not going to operate separately. My question would be, what would be the interaction between each academy group and the overall council itself?
Right, so as you all saw, Cabarrus County Schools is way ahead of the game, so we are blessed in Cabarrus County Schools to already have strong business and community industry partners. So it would be Mr. Parker's responsibility as a CTE Director to make sure that both the Advisory Council, this Advisory Council, as well as the individual academy advisory boards are working together in order to create a seamless program.
Thank you all.
All right, Mr. Schumaker.
As, on the list, it notes years one, two, three, and four, and I guess those are equivalent, I just want to make sure that those are equivalent to the groups. You had Group One, Group Two, Group Three, and Group Four in the policy. Is that the way I'm to interpret those years in the, on the list?
Yes, so the way the policy reads is the board makes the initial appointment...
Right.
And then the individuals that are appointed are divided into groups, and that's how they will then roll off.
All right, so it would be more effective if we put group number on the very bottom of the list, so it would be equal to the policy. That's the only little change that would...
Whatever, your pleasure, yes, sir.
It's just, it's a little bit confusing, because the policy had different wording. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Furtinbaum.
Okay, and I had requested that we have a member added that was a broader, what I'll call, large-scale technology. And one of my former colleagues, Wayne Butler, who is a principal technologist at Charter Communications, agreed to participate. I think he'll bring more of that broad-scale technology perspective. One of the things we're missing in the technology business today is students who want to focus on more than webpages and video and phone apps. There's a whole market that drives the rest of the industry, and unfortunately, the, what I call the sexy technology is what people want to do, but we need the other folks in a much larger scale. So if you take a department that has 100 technology people, there may be 15 that are focused on those sexy things new graduates want to do, and there's 85 jobs, many that are still open and posted for the rest, if they will just broaden their insights. So I think Mr. Butler can help bring that background. So I'd ask that he be moved up to that Business and Industry Partners, and perhaps he can be put in year three and balance out that chart at the bottom. So, thank you.
Now, my question, what I, I have a question, and we talked about the parents, and I wanted to make sure it was parents of children that were currently in those classes. Now, are all these ones that got yes by, are they, did they have children in those? I mean, did we double-check and make sure that they, they were currently enrolled in our CTE classes?
Yes, ma'am, this year. Now, some of them may have been enrolled first semester, and it's now second semester, so they're not currently enrolled in a CTE class, but yes, ma'am, they are currently enrolled.
All these that we did check to make sure that they were, so their children are in our schools and are in our classes then, so that's, that's why I wanted to make sure that that was the case. We only have one, two, three, four, so it's five out of, out of, let's see, eight, nine, 10, 11. So out of 21, there's only five then, and you don't know how many are Kannapolis and how many are, live in Kannapolis and how many live in Cabarrus County?
Those are, I believe those are Cabarrus County. I will remind you that the statute nor the policy requires them to be parents, it's a suggestion. So as requested by the board, we ran a report to indicate that those are existing parents.
Well, I think that's, I know it's a suggestion...
Yes, ma'am.
But I think it's a good suggestion that that be the case. And that's why I was, I was curious if that was the, well, we know out of one of those, I would think that one of them would be Kannapolis at least, so that leaves that the other ones are the other way. But that's, I just wanted to make sure that they were, their children were all, that we did check that, that it wasn't saying, because I'm a parent, I mean, I can put, yes, I'm a parent, but neither, I mean, I have two children, but neither one of them currently. So if you ask me a question, if I'm a parent, I can say, if you just ask me that question...
Those were not self-reporting, ma'am. I gave that list to our CTE Department, and they ran it against our information system for existing students.
Oh, okay, because I didn't know if you just asked the person, are you a parent?
No, ma'am, I've not been in communication with any of these people, and we have not approached any of these individuals. This has only been submitted to you.
Oh, okay. All right, that was my, and you other guys, did y'all have any more?
So they don't know that they're on the list, or they do know they're on the list?
I have not, because the board makes that appointment, so it would be inappropriate for me to contact those folks and, at this point, so...
So we're appointing folks that don't, may or may not know that they're on this list. I'm, they seem like good folks. To me, I do have to disclose that two of these folks are City of Concord employees as well, and one is a colleague of mine at the airport, so if that makes a difference.
And that would not prevent you from voting on this?
Okay, if no other questions, all right.
Ms. Carpenter, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this list with the amendment moving Mr. Wayne Butler to the Business and Industry Partners grouping.
No, second. We have a motion second. Any further discussion? If not, would that change? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Okay, happy numbers, aye.
Thank you.
All right, next we have... I'm sorry, I'm probably giving our TV people a heart attack over there. We're at 10.8, we'll keep up here. 10.8, Tim Lauter, your favorite 10-year plan?
Yes, ma'am, unless you just, burning to hear it again, I made that presentation in our work session, and we tried to make all notes that you made at that session, and it's ready for approval should you wish to do so. Are you having questions?
I mean, are you going to...
No, ma'am, not unless you need it.
Okay, well, what I'm going to do then...
I had a couple of questions.
Excuse me. Okay, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to start down here. Mr. Powell, you got anything on the 10-year plan that you would, comments you would like to make? He says he's not going to go back through it. He's already told you one time what's on it, so he's not going to tell you again.
I've got it memorized.
You got it memorized, but if you, you have any comments on it?
No, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Walters, I think he's got stuff spread, he's got to make some comments.
All right, well, what I did is, I went, this week, I went back and I looked at the other 10-year plans that we've had over the last, every January or so that we've had a 10-year plan, I tried to look at the two and see what was the difference. And one thing, a couple of things popped out here is the middle school portion. When you did the high school, you provided us with the complete, the enrollment for those, those high schools. We didn't get that with the middle school. And there was a concern, is looking back at, is it Harris Road that's got the biggest growth? How is that new middle school going to help that Harris Road at all? Where it's taught, where you...
It really depends on how you draw the districts for the high school. Should we marry those districts and make those match, then Harris Road would go with kids who either go to Northwest or wherever we reassign them for their high school.
So you don't think we'll have a capacity problem with Harris Road?
Well, it's going to be a capacity problem in the next four or five years, but we did put a large multiplex unit out there last year, we're only using two classrooms out there, so we have some room for growth there beyond what they already have.
Okay, the, some other ones. And then on the high school portion of it, I mean, just looking back, the last several years, they're recommending the replacement of Central Cabarrus as the biggest need, and I think I still think that that's where we ought to go. We've got a high school there that, you know, I was at that high school over the weekend and noticed, that's probably the smallest gym that we have, and we've got the highest student capacity, and continuing to put that school off, I think that school really needs to be a priority over the northern, Northwest Cabarrus, because a lot of the kids are, when we put the new school in, we're going to be taking a lot of more kids from the north... when we put the new school in, we're going to be taking a lot of more kids from the Northwest Cabarrus and Cox Mill area. So, I think, you know, just looking at that, I think that the recommendation probably should stick with the.
I think right now, key there is to remember, that's just a request for land, it's not deciding, it's the next land banking request.
Okay, and then it's?
Which actually, both schools are on for land banking.
And we have met with the county right after, we had our discussion and thing, they asked them to make sure that those two are one of our higher priorities.
I'm like all kinds up here.
Hey, that's, we, we did meet with the county and then they have directed there for people to, to look for both areas for us.
All right, again, the last part goes with our plan with Beverly Hills and Royal Oaks and the plans here were 650-seat schools and nowhere did they think 800 was really a great idea. And here we are, looking at having larger schools in those areas. Not sure I'm really supportive of that either.
But that was based on a recommendation from the board at our work session asking me to.
Yeah, I understand that, but just looking through, again, comparing what we've done in the past here, and I just haven't seen a justification enough that would change my opinion on that. So, those are my comments or thoughts.
All right, I'm going to jump in here and go back up, okay?
No additional comments, Madam Boshier.
All right, Mr.?
Mr. Ladder, we talked earlier about a aerospace academy at the new high school. Do we need, at this point, to make any plans about, which would apply to the 10-year plan about the construction and logistics and arrangement of the new high school at all in, in order to accommodate the needs or the space or the, I can imagine a lot of equipment would be needed for aerospace activity, taking engines apart or something to that effect. But do, do we have enough capacity in the existing plan for the new high school to accommodate the proposed academy?
Yes, sir, those CTEs, academies were finalized before we finished design and we designed the spaces to accommodate such.
I have one comment on, page 37 was the 5.4 million for the mobile units and in light of the most recent changes that are, at least we've heard, we haven't seen the final bill from our legislature, will you make an adjustment on that? Is that the plan, to make an adjustment to that 5.4 million since it won't be, it'll probably be something somewhat 75% less or something like that?
Yes, sir, that adjustment we made during the budget process issue, which we presented to the county.
But do you think it'll be smart now to make an adjustment to this?
I can comment on that. So, right now, it still is not law yet, so actually, something on the internet today said that the House may vote today. So, all indications look good, but until it's done, it's not done. And as soon as it is done, then yes, we'll adjust that. So, again, the county asked for worst-case scenario, that's what we presented. They know what our, what we think our need will be, and as soon as that's the law, then they'll have that information.
My final comment is, you'll update this footer with the appropriate date when we pass this, is that correct?
Yes, sir, with some passes.
All right, is that your only question then? All right, Sandy?
I'm good with it, and just thanks for putting up with us through our 10,000 questions.
That's what the 10-year plan's all about.
Well, you know you can't get away from me.
Yes, ma'am.
Ah, you know that. Well, first of all, vote before I, so I want to thank you and thank staff. I know a lot of time and, and things have been put in there and I'm, I'm just going to make a few, I've been writing down my comments. And, and one of my problems that I have, I think that we should have combination of both. And I'm just going to put that in a nutshell. I think we should have small and large. I'm not saying that all small or all large are good. Our small schools better, small-size consideration for safe and learning, West End Policy Brief, this is where the information came from, and I do want to state, I read the whole thing, not just inserts, I did read this, everything was read. Smaller schools are, on the average, can provide, number one, a safe place for students, a more positive challenging environment, higher achievement, higher graduation rates, fewer discipline problems, a much grace, greater satisfaction for families, students, and teachers. Smaller schools are more productive working places for both adults and students. In, in the more intimate environment, teachers are more likely to report satisfaction with their work, higher levels of morale, and greater commitment. The U.S. Department of Education, Justice Department, and again, these reports, and you know what I'm talking about. And I want to state, because I don't want somebody to say, well, she was talking about reports that were 15 years old. And they were, and I've, and I'm looking for more that are more up to date. This was a chart that we're talking about, and we talk about incidents of crimes. This was a report and it was talking about small schools and they're referring to 300 or less for small, middle schools, 300 to 900, and large schools were 900 or greater. For serious crimes, for a small school, it was 4%, middle school, 8%, large schools, 33%. Fiscal attacks or fights with weapons, a small school, that's 300 or less, it was 2%, middle school, 300 to 900, 6%. For a 900 and over, it was 20%. Theft or larceny, for small schools, 18%, middle schools, 300 to 900, 30%, larger, 68%. You see that large increase. Vandalism, 23% for the small, the middle size, 40%, and larceny, 62%. Teachers are more apt to know their students as individuals and to be familiar with their family's backgrounds from which they come. This enables teachers to be more knowledgeable, make special, special priorities for individuals' needs and talents, and to receive better cooperation from parents resolving problems that arise. Now, this is the, the dollar and cents, the cost-effectiveness of small schools. And this was Knowledge Work Foundation, 2002, page 12 and 13. This report deepens the argument for small schools in three important ways. First, analyzes of more than 3,000 construction projects, shows that smaller schools are no more expensive to build than much larger schools. Second, analyzes of the budget of 25 good small schools throughout the United States, demonstrates that the average, they spend less per student on education programs, maintenance and operations than the per-person expenditures in their district, yet they achieve the same results that are equal or better to the schools in the same area. Third, that the schools offer innovative and effective education programs, facilities, and strategies for cost-effectiveness that they can serve as model and inspiration to people interested in cost-effectiveness in good, small schools. All right, I know that's a lot to say, but I wanted to say it. Anyway, but my other question, and to get to that, I made my statement, but you, you know, in the 10-year report, they say, okay, you don't want to rebuild, and this is all on Beverly Hills, saying, not, don't want to rebuild it, and the 10-year plan says, don't do it, and then you say you want to repurpose Beverly Hills. And you were talking about the three pods. Are you going to say you're going to rip out that bad plumbing when you do that and you're going to do that? That's what the big problem was.
The repurposing is basically tearing down most of it and building back what portion are we need to support our mission at that point, location. So, the bolder, the bolder portion of that school has every intention of being demolished. The remaining, the 95 portion has eight classrooms, that wing, it would build support structures to help, to, to marry up to that.
But you kept talking about the three pods, you said it was built.
That's Arban McAllister, ma'am.
Oh, is that McAllister?
Yes, ma'am.
But what are, what is the intentions, if you did, you said repur, you're not going to repurpose, then at all, in, in the, in, in the, in that plan, 10-year plan, what would you do, would you use Brown, I mean, Beverly Hills at all in the plan?
Yes, ma'am, if you, on page 18 of the 10-year plan, we talked about consolidating Beverly Hills, Royal Oaks. We also listed some Beverly Hills alternative options, and all of them included tearing down the older portion of the building. In doing so, we looked at a teaching and learning center, maybe possibility of moving the Glenn Center to that location with the additions. Also, even off, just in one case, completely abandoned the property and offered to Cabarrus County for resale, for redevelopment of the community. And then other, via related services, be a welcome center or ESL as a second.
Is they on, but, because I kept thinking about that. But that is, that, that's what you, you would tear down all that and just use that back building?
I'd use the back building, plus would have to build backs, support structures, obviously, you know, for administration and that sort of thing to support whichever mission we decided to have at that location.
But, okay, all right, you guys got anything else? If not, all right, he's ready to vote.
Madam Boshier, I'd like to recommend that we approve the 10-year plan as presented.
Second. Okay, motion second.
No further discussion? All of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of those opposed, say no. No?
No, I'm here, you are.
Is he yes or no?
Yes.
Yeah, so it is five to two. All right, thank you very much. All right. And then we have, is it, it's Brian. We have 10.9 approval of change order for West Cabarrus High School. Brian Coates.
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm here tonight to ask for your approval for change order that has been requested by Branch and Associates, our general contractor on the West Cabarrus High School site, in the amount of $156,642.82. We had, I think we had a good bit of discussion at last week's work session with Mr. Ladder on what the change order was for and what it covered. Just so that you know, this change order is being, a portion of this change order is being paid for by the $600,000 that was approved by the Cabarrus County Commissioners at their work session last week as well. So, at this time, if you have any further questions, be happy to try and answer them.
Can you just tell us why this is 156,000? How does that balance with the contingency?
So, so what that, so what that is, is we've utilized on this change order all of the site work allowances that we captured under the contract with Branch and Associates. So, in our contract, we had mass rock removal, we had unsuitable soil removal, we had five allowances that pertain to site work, and we have spent all of those allowances on this change order so that it minimized the amount of contingency money that we had to actually use from the county.
So, when the county allowed us to use the 600,000, that was, if you will, providing the contingency funds to us that they normally don't give us upfront, plus the extra that we needed to cover this change order, is that right?
That's correct. It's going to cover this change order, plus it will cover future change orders, which unfortunately probably will be forthcoming based on what the site looks like and what we're encountering.
So, at this time, we're only asking for 156,642.82?
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Approval of?
Did we discuss that last week, or we just, last week, we're talking about 600,000? Was that? From last week?
So, last week was essentially asking you to approve us to ask the county to release $600,000 of that contingency money, to have to pay for the impending change order that we knew was coming.
Okay, I just don't recall talking about a change order of that number last week.
Yeah, it's just really the culmination of going through, getting that money approved to move, yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other discussion? But we're, at this point, we're 156. Now, we may come back and we have to, are you telling?
We, we will be coming back probably and asking for more.
We know it's going to probably end up around 600,000, you think, or?
Yeah, that was, that was kind of why we used that figure with the county when we talked with them. Obviously, we want to minimize the number of times that we have to go back before them and ask for that contingency money.
But we know it's probably going to end up, I mean, we're trying to get out as?
Trying our best. So, so some, again, some creative things with this site is that we are working on what we're considering the west portion. It's, it's separated by streams. The stadium complex and the ball fields are all on the eastern side of this property. Very high water table, they have done a few test pits over there. Within, less than a foot of breaking ground, they have encountered water. So, it is going to be our department's recommendation to the contractors to not mobilize and begin work on that side of the site well into the summer, when the, the water table hopefully is considerably lower, the ground is drier, and it won't impact us as much from a site standpoint. If that happens, we're going to try our best to capture some, some grading on that side of the site that we may be able to modify and adjust to get some credit money back against these change orders. But again, that will not happen probably till well into the end of the summer.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to approve the change order for 1, 156,642.82? I'd, I'll make that motion, I mean, we're, all right, motion second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, that unanimously passes.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm, I'm David.
All right, for you. All right, do I have a motion to go into closed session, that the board convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318-11A3, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney, public body, which privilege is hereby acknowledged pursuant to General Statute 143-318-11A6, to consider the qualifications, competency, performance, character, fitness, condition, or appointment, or condition of initial employment of an individual public official or employee, or prospective public official or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public official or employee, or to review personnel recommendations. Or, and I need to get our attorney to add something to that.
Madam Chair, and in addition to that, it should be to establish, to establish or instruct staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken in negotiating material terms for the acquisition of real property pursuant to General Statute 143, 318.11A5.
All right.
I'll make the motion as it's been stated.
Second.
We have a motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I would like to bid our viewing audience a good night.